And everyone, I'd like to call to order the joint meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Housing Authority for November 6th, 2007. May we have a roll call, please, for council?
Council members, Draymond.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Yusefian.
Here.
Mayor Najarian.
Here.
May we have a roll call for the Housing Authority?
Authority members, Draymond.
Here.
Mincy.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Prozian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Yusefian.
Here.
Chairman Weaver.
Here.
May we have your report, please?
The agenda for the November 6th, 2007, joint public meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Housing Authority was postponed Thursday, November 1st, 2007, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. May we have the first item?
Item one is Director of Community Development and Housing regarding CDBG and SHP program income. At 1A is Council Resolution appropriating $85,825 to provide funds for fiscal year 2007-2008, CDBG administration fiscal year 2008-09, CDBG projects. At 1B is Housing Authority Resolution appropriating $15,995 to provide funding for SHP program administration for fiscal year '07-'08.
Mr. Weaver.
I'd like to move 1A and B. Oh, wait, 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 wait. I can't do that. 1A for council.
Second, for council.
Is there any discussion on 1A? Roll call, please.
Council members, Draymond.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Yusefian.
Hi.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes.
Move for authority.
Yeah, I'll move 1B.
Second.
There's been motion, a second. Roll call, please.
Authority members, Draymond.
Yes.
Mincy.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Prozian.
Yes.
Arrow.
Yes.
Yusefian.
Hi.
Chairman Weaver.
Hi.
Let me go to item two, please.
Item two is Director of Community Development and Housing regarding status program planning for fiscal year 2008-09, CDBG ESG and Home Annual Action Plan. At 2A is Authority Motion Approving Fiscal Year '08-'09, CDBG ESG and Home Program Priorities. To B, Authority Motion Approving Fiscal Year 2008-2009, CDBG Funding Allocation Plan by Funding Category as Directed by the Authority and Council and Authorizing Issuance of an RFP to Qualified Community Agencies and City Departments for Social Service and Capital Improvements Projects.
Does it report on this? I'll go to Jesteran, Assistant Director of Staff Report. Jesteran.
Thank you, Mr. Starbird. Mayor Najarian, members of the City Council, Chairman Weaver, members of the Housing Authority of the City of Glendale. This is the stage in the CDBG program planning where we have to obtain review and approval of the program priorities for fiscal year '08-'09, a proposed funding allocation plan for fiscal year '08-'09, and authorization to issue request for proposal to solicit funding applications from community organizations and city departments. Before I get too far, I do want to mention this is the, we are embarking on the 33rd year of the federal Community Development Block Grant Program. That's over three decades. That's a long time that we've been doing this. It's a very proven program and evidently continues to be popular at the federal level and at the local level and all, even though there's been recent attempts to drastically change the CDBG program, it's managed to survive. I also want to take this time to introduce the five CDBG Advisory Committee members. All five of them are here today. That's 100 percent participation and support and backup to our report. They are a very, I think this is reflective of how committed they are to their assignment and how seriously they take their responsibility. I'd like to begin by introducing the Chairman, Chang Lee, the Vice Chair, Gary Cornell, Committee Member, Zaire Amerian, Alec Bogdaserian, and the veteran of the group, Mr. Ifran Alivares, who is still with us.
I think he's going to be with us for a long time. He's a very healthy individual. I just want to let you know that.
He's still very young. As the City Clerk mentioned, the purpose for today's meeting is to obtain direction from the Housing Authority and the City Council regarding the funding priorities for fiscal year '08-'09, the funding allocation plan, which would allow us to, to give us the parameters to be able to issue the RFP, and authorization to issue the RFP to the community and to the city departments. In terms of the funding, we are projecting under the CDBG program to have $3,658,000 available under the Emergency Shelter Grant Program, which is a funding allocation for homeless programs, an entitlement of $145,000, and then we're projecting home funds to a tune of $2,780,000, for a total of $5,881,825. In terms of program planning for the annual plan, even though the HUD annual plan includes the ESG program and the home program, we are focused on the CDBG program because it is the largest entitlement at 3.6, because it has the greatest amount of discretion in terms of what we can do with the funding, and it involves the greatest amount of community participation. So, we're focused on the CDBG program. And the national objectives are simply to eliminate conditions of slums and blight in our community and to provide programs that benefit low and moderate income persons, including the homeless. In terms of the plan development process that's required by HUD that we follow every year, it all begins with having on file with HUD a five-year consolidated plan, which we submitted back in 2005. So, it's good until 2010, and then we, or the City Council appoints the CDBG Advisory Committee. Our current committee, this is the second year where we have all five of the same members. That's been very helpful. Part of the process is to complete an annual community needs assessment, to establish program priorities based on that needs assessment, to develop a general preliminary funding allocation plan. It's preliminary meaning that later on in the process, the City Council has the ability to modify the plan that we, you will be approving today. Part of the process is to issue requests for proposals to the community and city departments, to have the advisory committees, both the CDBG Committee and a homeless committee that's appointed by the Homeless Coalition, to review funding proposals and to make recommendations to the City Council and Housing Authority. Then we have a public hearing on those recommendations, and then we submit those recommendations to the City Council and Housing Authority for your final approval. Again, our current CDBG Advisory Committee is comprised of these four gentlemen with their term in parentheses. The two-year terms will expire June 30th of next year, and the three-year terms will expire June 30th of 2009, for your reference.
That's five gentlemen.
I beg your pardon?
That's five. You said four gentlemen.
Oh, I'm sorry. I stand corrected. Five gentlemen, or four gentlemen and one that's not a gentleman.
That friend, he's trying to send a message.
Somebody's got a gentleman.
That's the second time he's gone after you. Just remember that.
So, we have completed the updated needs assessment, and as I tried emphasizing in the report, it is an updated needs assessment. There is a relatively modest level of community input and data analysis that HUD requires because the main thrust of our needs assessment, which is a lot more comprehensive and extensive, is in preparation of the five-year plan. So, the annual updates are primarily to check in and validate that the five-year program priorities are still valid, or there haven't been any significant changes in the community, or with the views of the community or the city's priorities to warrant any changes to the five-year priorities. This year's needs assessment consisted primarily of two public hearings. HUD requires one. We always have two, one in southwest Glendale and one in southeast Glendale. So, we had two meetings. We had 42 persons attend to give us direct input on their views on what should be the city's priorities, and based on that input, we presented the findings to the CDBG Advisory Committee, and they determined that the program priorities are the same as the current program priorities or as the current five-year program priorities, which you see listed on the screen and in your report. And they're in no particular order, but we would be able to say that the highest social service priorities, for example, would be youth programs. We hear it time and time again. Then within youth programs, employment programs for the youth would be high priority. Then employment programs in general for youth and adults alike, including things like ESL and basic skills training. Public crime and safety is always on top of the list, as is childcare. And senior services is becoming more and more of a priority we're beginning to learn. I guess as we all get older, we have a vested interest in that. In terms of neighborhood improvement priorities that have been identified, it's always parks and more and more recreational facilities. Again, especially in southern Glendale, there's always mention of code enforcement-type improvements that continue to be needed in our neighborhoods. Street lighting always comes up. Healthcare facilities is always mentioned. And consistent with long-range plan would be parking and traffic, which are always a concern. And then in terms of homeless priorities, again, they pretty much speak for themselves. Shelters and transitional housing. Case management is the real key in relying on the caseworkers that are assessing the needs and the abilities of our homeless population in order to make recommendations and referrals to programs such as the Chester Street Project, ultimately. Street outreach is big. That's pretty much where it all begins. Supportive services and domestic violence programs continue to be mentioned over and over again. So, these are the program priorities that were reviewed by the, and recommended by the CDBG Advisory Committee. And concurrent with establishing program priorities to get ready to issue the RFP, we have to develop a proposed preliminary funding allocation plan by funding category. And again, it begins with what's, what we predict to be available, which is the 3.658, taking 20 percent for administration, 15 percent for social services, which is the maximum that HUD allows us to use for social services. Then the balance, or 85, I'm sorry, or 65 percent of the funds would go to capital neighborhood improvements. What we did this year is we did have a meeting with the city departments of planning meeting to ascertain the city's priorities from the perspective of the city departments, and based on input that we had been receiving from the City Council during your CIP study sessions in terms of what we were able to glean. And so, there were some projects that were recommended to be, to be pre-designated and taken out of the competitive RFP process, and those totaled $1,972,000, which would leave a balance of $488,000 available to the community for the RFP. Those pre-designated projects would be code enforcement, which we've been funding at this level for probably the last 10 years. The Pacific Park Pool is clearly a priority. A Section 108 loan commitment related to the SM Pacific project, this represents our annual payment, and to begin to comply with the ADA, our ADA obligations, recommendation for $125,000 towards an ADA curb grant program, which would leverage a larger curb grant program by the Public Works Department. So, this would total $1,972,000 for pre-designated projects. Now, because our committee members are here, they, although the advisory committee recognizes that the city has its priorities, their preference, they have expressed that their preference would be for city projects to continue to be part of the competitive RFP process. But recognizing that these are the highest priorities of the city, they talked about it and agreed that it would make sense to pre-designate these projects and include them as part of the proposed funding allocation plan for '08-'09.
Can we talk about this?
Then the next slide is a list of the proposed plan in comparison to the current year plan, so you could get a sense of exactly where we're at. So, you could see, in terms of total amount of funds available, it's basically the same. When we add the program income, which you approved in your previous action, it actually allows us to add a little bit more funding to public social services, and every bit helps. That's probably one project's worth. The difference between the 509 and the 520, so that program income really came in handy. These are the current year projects, and of course, for next year, they're all blank because that's going to be part of the RFP. Under social services, the city departments do compete in the same RFP process as the community projects. Then the advisory committee evaluates and weighs the merits of both city projects with community projects and makes the funding recommendations. Currently, in terms of a ratio, 23 percent of funding goes to city projects, and 77 percent goes to community projects. These are all the current year projects. In terms of capital projects, again, the current year funding demand is 2.4. Next year, it's proposed 2,460,000, pre-designated. Again, here's the comparison, the current year versus proposed for next year. Pre-designated projects in the current year, proposed pre-designated for '08-'09, and then the balance is what would be available for the community under the RFP. This year was 400. Next year, it's proposed to be 488, so it's a little bit more. Then this would be the total. So, this is a funding plan that's been recommended and submitted to the City Council and Housing Authority for your approval. Once this is approved, we can issue the RFP and continue with the plan development process.
That's it?
Oh.
If you're...
Mr. Lee would like to make some comments.
Yeah, I want to get through anyhow.
Okay. Mr. Yusefian, you'd like to go before Mr. Lee?
HUD has certain requirements as far as spending the money on certain time basis. What's their requirement? Is it, you have to spend the money within a year, or do you have to spend the money within two years? What is their requirement?
Councilman Yusefian D., the social service funds have to be spent within the year that they are funded.
Okay. And the capital?
The capital could be carried over...
For how long?
Over a couple of years. Well, it's, it depends on size of project, but generally between one to two years, unless it's designed as a multi-year project. For example, the Pacific Park Pool would be designed as a multi-year project, so when we submit our application, our annual plan to HUD, we would describe it as such. And then, because it's a large project, HUD would generally allow that.
And how much of a leeway do you get with that?
We...
Can I, can I plan a 20-year plan?
No.
Okay.
We begin to get into trouble if, if we are, if our expenditure rate is, falls below one and a half, one and a half times our grant. So, for example, at any given time, we are not supposed to have more than $6 million unspent or unencumbered. So, that would be the HUD rule. So, for example, one major project could be lagging, but as long as the other projects are...
Are moving forward, so long as...
Right.
The only reason I ask is because some of those projects on the capital in the past, and I'll be very blunt, like New Horizons, last time, they didn't get any money. And the reasoning was, gee, you have all this extra money you haven't spent, and so on and so forth. And so, I wanted to know, how does that affect us, the city? Because I don't think we've spent any of that 1.2 million dollars, and I wanted to know how much we can keep gathering that before we get into trouble. And that's, that's my issue with all of, some of this. That's why I wanted to ask how long you can go without doing this. Because we have certain rules for some people and then some rules for some other people. I just want to be consistent, so thank you for your explanation. So, it's one and a half times the capital money? Is that what it is?
The entitlement. So, it'd be one and a half times the...
The 2.4 million?
No, it would be one and a half times the 3.658.
Okay. One and a half times.
Okay. Let's hear from Mr. Lee.
And when Mr. Lee's coming up, I'd like him, since he's may up here, to address a couple of questions. One, he had two recommendations in there. Wanted to take the ones that pre-designated and free that up from being pre-designated, I guess, and then have staff be in there to present their opinion why to fund this, just like anybody else. I'd like to know the rationale of the five of you, because it says in here, this is a much more efficient operation with the five of you, and you've been dedicated to it. So, what's your rationale?
Well, Mr. Chair, our rationale is that, you know, as a, you know, serving the community as a committee members here, we like to make sure that even the pre-designated city projects fall, you know, within the rules of the guidance that federal fundings are set for. And, you know, gives us a chance to really review, you know, what the real community needs are versus, you know, we're not, you know, saying that, you know, we're going along, I mean, we are going along with the, what the council is doing, but I think if we're here to serve as a body to serve the community, we'd like to have that chance to review these projects, even though it's a pre-designated projects, against the community needs and, you know, evaluate them.
I gather you would enter that scenario with the knowledge of what this council has thought is the top priority, so it wouldn't be a question of you zeroing them out. I guess it would be a question of adjusting the funding for other community needs and still keeping these in the mix.
Yeah, I think one of the items that came up, continually came up for review was this, you know, the Acrody Pool project, where we're setting aside so much money for the future project, and, you know, we're, you know, debating whether to really hold that money for that project or to actually use that money for the immediate needs for the community, you know, for the fiscal year.
Okay, you can go ahead with your speech now.
Again, my name's Chang Lee. Well, thank you, Chairman Weaver, and Mayor Najarian, and the Housing Authority members. It was an honor and privilege for our community members to serve under the leadership of Mr. Alivares last year, and it'll be an honor again for us to, you know, serve the community this year. We hope to reflect, you know, at our, you know, best effort to reflect the needs of the community this year. And again, I came up here to speak on that subject of just, the question you asked, is that, you know, we are here to serve the city and serve the community, so we'd like to have that opportunity to evaluate the total program and not just a small segment of the funding. You know, you have appointed us, you know, to do our job effectively, and we think we are qualified individuals to perform that function. So, in the future consideration, you know, allow us and give us a little bit more leeway to work within the program.
So, if we don't like what you do, and if we freighted up and we didn't like what you did, we could go right back to the same numbers.
Well, you always have that privilege anyways.
That's it? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lee. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor? Any other cards? I'm willing to give them the flexibility, but I don't know about any of you.
No.
He says it's been much more efficient and everything in operation.
More cards? No more cards. Mr. Starbird?
Well, I was going to comment on that. You recall where you were before and what brought you to this pre-designation, and that was, you gave them the flexibility to evaluate it, and then you disagreed.
That was a ten member.
And from the standpoint of efficiency, where you got to was, well, if there's something that we think is important enough, granted, you've, almost all of you have been through more than one round of the community capital and community program funding, and what happened was, you had a committee, prior committee, who had a different view than your priorities as a result, then you had to essentially go against their recommendations. And the observation was, is it more efficient to do that, or is it more efficient to say, let's allocate to the committee? And frankly, their job is what you designate their job to be, which is to, which is to evaluate the proposals for the amount of money that you designate available for the community. Is it more efficient to let them essentially oversee the funds that you want to allocate for the community and reserve for city projects, those that you think are the highest priority, or have them go through the process and then find out after it's done that they disagree? Then you're going to change the allocation anyway. With staff's view, if a project is important enough, pre-designate it so the community groups and others don't all weigh in and frankly begin to compete for something that really isn't going to be available. Because you've done it both ways.
Mr. Quintero?
Well, let me also say that some of the projects that we, well, all of the projects that we designated are going to benefit the entire community, not a specific section by age, by whatever breakdown you want to give it. So, I think that's the best way to go. Although, my compliments to the new makeup of the CDBG Committee, because last year was completely different from previous years, and I think they're doing a tremendous job. But these allocations that we've set aside, I think will absolutely benefit all the maximum amount of taxpayers and non-taxpayers for them.
Ms. Blake?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Housing Authority. I think Mr. Lee has articulated the feelings of the committee. However, the committee did recommend the pre-designation of these projects. They did request to interview the departments that are pre-designated, and that keeps them informed with regards to what those projects are and how they fit in the overall community. And we've talked to George and to the different departments. They have no problem in meeting with the committee and talking about their, their individual projects, and it gives the committee the opportunity to understand the, at least where the, where the funds are going and how it fits into the overall plan.
My only thinking was, okay, we have a million-two for the pool. What if? What if they came back and said only a million? How far would that other 200,000 go in serving other community needs that, as of now, we don't even know about? It would be forthcoming, so we could always say, no, we still want the million-two, but a million isn't shabby by any means.
If I can just answer that for just one second. Because last year, you pre-designated, and also you, the committee, if they see something that, they're still doing their jobs, and if they see something that's just amazing, they still can come back after the review process and say to the city council, we pre-designated these projects, however, we have this community project that we think is just superior, and that's part of their recommendation to you in the end.
Could they come back with a recommendation, if they so choose, that tells how they would adjust these in light of what they know after they go through the process?
Sure.
Doesn't mean we're changing, but at least we know.
Mr. Starbird? What I suggest in that regard, if they see projects or programs that they think are particularly notable, they can refer those to you and say, gee, you know, we really think you ought to weigh these versus your other capital needs.
Yeah.
I mean, what, in all fairness to the committee, what they don't see is they don't sit through the half a dozen or more study sessions you have, where you've worked through the whole capital improvement program, and you've seen the myriad of projects that currently still have a gap of almost $70 million over 10 years, for which the pools depending on CDBG for three years running of 1.2 million dollars. So, this is just, this is just the second year, second year allocation. There'll be a third year allocation if we're going to be able to adequately fund just the minimum of a community pool. And even with that assistance from CDBG, you all still face a 50 to 70 million dollar gap over 10 years in the projects that you've identified you'd like to do.
Well, I just like to leave them with the thought that you don't wipe out, he's pre-designated and only play with what's left. You can do that, but come back with any other recommendation to adjust. You understand? Just don't shut the door and say it's done.
Mr. Yusefian?
I have a different view on this. I wasn't here last time when this happened. I was not in council chambers, and there was the pre-designation that took place. I know one of my colleagues has had a completely change of mind, but I tend to stick to what I strongly believe what these funds are designed for. This fund, by its name, says "Community Block Grant," does not say "City Block Grant," says "Community." There's a big difference between the community who's out there counting on these dollars to provide services to the public, which in many cases is more efficient and a lot cheaper than any bureaucratic government can ever achieve, ever. So, to me, I sit down and I look at this. I say, okay, what is this money to be used for? What is the best use of this money? And I kind of go along with what Mr. Weaver was saying. If you come in and you look at this and the community... is this money to be used for? What is the best use of this money? And I kind of go along with what Mr. Weaver was saying. If you come in and you look at this, and the community comes in and says, you know what, New Horizon is coming up, and I need to have $100,000 to build this center so I can serve 200 children. Do you know what it would cost the City of Glendale to build a center to serve 200 children? Millions. But for $100,000, I get a big bang for our money. And yes, we've had many, many meetings in here about capital improvement. In all due respect to my colleagues and the staff, we never contacted any of those community members and said, by the way, could you come in here and see if you can get a pie, a piece of this pie? They don't. They do not have ability to put impact fees and collect money. They do not have abilities to tax people. We do as the city. We have many sources of revenue. To many small organizations, this is their only funding source, next to the little cookie bake-offs and, and going and begging for money here and there. But this is it. This is it. Some projects in this town didn't happen. They didn't paint certain buildings because we could only give them half the money, not the full money. So, guess what? The building didn't get painted, or the roof didn't get changed. That's what this is all about. And, you know, we say these people that we put out there, five of them, are extremely good people. They're professionals. Hey, Mr. Lee happens to be the president of the Chamber of Commerce of the Korean-Americans. He's, he's very versed in many issues. Every single one of those gentlemen is an expert. They've known these things. They know this community, and we need to trust them. Let them do their job and then come back. When we pre-designate, and for them to say, oh, well, come back later and tell me, come on, you know, really, are we really going to change it? No. We need to trust them to do the right thing. They know where we stand. They know what our priorities are. So, we need to trust them to do what we appointed them to do. Go out there, listen to the community, because we don't. When they're sitting there eight, 10 hours a day, listening to every single organization that comes in with all their documents, and we don't do that. The stack of applications, last time I asked for, it's about this thick, this thick, and they have to go through them. And you know how much they get for it? Zero. Nothing. Only our thanks, and I really do thank you for all of that work, and this community thanks you. And all those people who end up getting the, the 10,000, the 15,000, the 20,000, they thank you, and all the people who get helped, thank you. But I would like to trust them and say, you know what, don't pre-designate. The only thing that I can see being pre-designated is the loan. This is a loan payment. It's like a mortgage payment. You have to make it, whether you like it or not. There is, you can't say, oh, don't pay 235,000, pay only 234,000. Okay, that doesn't change. That has to be done. But outside of that, you know, if curbs and gutters is not 125,000, it's 120,000, we could live with it. If it's not 50,000 for improvements, for, let's say you put the lights and it's less, we could live with that. If it's not 1.2, it's 1.1, we could live with that. And so, that's where I think, where Mr. Weaver's coming from, that's where I'm coming from. Give them a chance, and as Mr. Lee says, at the end of the day, we have the option to take it or leave it, and we have done this. For 87 years I've been here, we've done this. We've modified them, and sometimes we haven't modified them. So, that's where I am on.
Thank you.
Well, if I may speak, thank you. Well, let me tell you where I'm from. I am definitely not in favor of giving the entire advisory discretion to the CDBG. These particular pre-designated projects are critically important to the city, and I know that because I have spent time in the city. I am the elected official representing the broad community of the city. What I do not want to have is a situation where those particular projects, whether they're social services or capital projects, are being given more or less to one group, and have those particular groups who are going to be benefit from them rally behind the CDBG and create a controversy when it comes up to the city council. I want it to be known loud and clear that I stand firmly behind these pre-designated projects, not because I'm just pulling them out of the air, but because I feel that they are critical to the development of our community, to the elimination of blight, and for the improvement of the quality of life. And that's what I'm elected for. I feel that's our responsibility to have the discretion at the outset. After all, the CDBG, with all their hard work as an advisory committee, I do not want to second-guess their work. I do not want to, in public, indicate to them that they're out of touch with the, with the community in the event that there's a disagreement between us, because in the event that there's a disagreement, the council is going to prevail. I don't think it's fair to them. I think it's only fair at the outset to let them know that these are the projects that the council feels are important enough to be pre-designated. So, I'm, you know, we've had this, we've done this years past where the whole thing was open, and when the council starts fiddling around with the projects that we feel are important, it builds nothing but animosity between the CDBG, between those groups that, that had won under the CDBG formula, and now it's being taken away by the council, and that's not what this is all about. So, I would strongly support the maintaining the pre-designation of these projects.
But, Mr. Mayor, in the past, we did not give priorities and pre-designations. In here, we are giving priorities to them. They're sitting in here, hearing what your priorities are. They know what your priorities were last year. There was a big difference when we said, go out there and let everybody complete, compete. It was no holds barred. There was nothing for the previous boards to know which one has a higher pecking order. There is obvious and understanding in their behest that there is a higher pecking order in here. It's just that they would like to have the opportunity to make that decision without being handcuffed, and that's all there is to it. There needs to be a certain amount of trust. And, and I think what the chairman said is, ultimately, you make that decision. I don't think he, he would be upset if we change it, would you?
Mr. Starburg? I was going to say, there are two authority motions. I just want to clarify my position. I'm willing to stay the way it is now, but I got what I wanted. That is, if you got other recommendations to change off of the pre-designated, I want to hear that when you come back, because the unknown factor's out there. So, I don't think we've taken away any capability from you to do your job. One list is staying within the pre-designated, the other's going outside of it with your own intelligent recommendations. That's what we put you there for. So, there's two authority motions.
I do have one question, separate from the, the particular issue that we're discussing, and that is with regard to the administration. And let's assume that, that the pre-designation occurs as, as proposed. There's 520,000 of social services out there, and some of that is pre-designated also. It was, so it's about 400-something, that's, that's about 393 for the community, and there's 488,000 in capital improvements. And for those 800, 900,000 dollars of funds, there's a 678,000 administration? Doesn't that seem a bit, a bit excessive in light of the fact that so much of the money is being pre-designated and being presumably dumped into the appropriate departments that, that are responsible?
Mr., before the staff has a chance to respond, thank you very much, Mr. Najarian. I've been mentioning that for about six years, and I've always thought, just a percentage, I've always thought that 20% is just too high. Now, I'm sure there's going to be multiple justifications.
Legal reasons?
No, not legal, just justifications. That's the way it's always been. There are heavy, intensive programs, et cetera, et cetera. But I repeat, 20% is way, way too much, and I think it's been a voice in the wilderness for six years, but I do think that we should be looking at how we can bring that number down, just plain and simple, bring that number down. I'm not aware of other programs that use, you know, such high administrative numbers, especially when it's literally the same programs year after year that they're administering.
Comment? Please, Ms. Blake.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, Members of the City Council, I know it may appear like a lot of money. However, those, we have reduced the staff by two as a result of, I think, at least a 13% reduction in funding over the last three or four years. The administrative staff have, have to do all of the contract administration, even with pre-designated projects. They have to do the administration, they have to do the contract administration, they have to do all of the Davis Bacon. So, regardless of the size of the project, even a $3,000 project takes as much administration as a $100,000 project. So, they have to do all the contract administration, all the monitoring. And because the funds for the homeless programs, the SHP funds, come with very minute administration, these funds are also used to administer all of the homeless programs as well. And I will tell you, and we can, if you, if you like, Mr. Mayor, we can come back with a more detailed report to you, but I will say that the staff are stretched very, very thin to, to ensure contract compliance with all of HUD's requirements, to do all of the Davis Bacon on all the construction projects, and administer all of the homeless programs. They are, they're really stretched.
Mr. Dureen?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, Mr. Chair, with the CDBG funds, we also have to pay for direct services from the other city departments. For example, we pay a percentage of a senior accountant and an account position in the finance division. We pay for a percentage of the attorney that's assigned to our department. We pay for a percentage of an IT position. We pay rent. CDBG's assessed, I think, 35 or 40,000 dollars in rent. So, it also pays for direct administrative services from, within the city, the city organization.
Rent to the city?
Correct.
Mr. Quintero? Well, you know what? I think it would be a good, I mean, obviously, the process will go on for this year, but I think it would be a good idea to zero in on some of the expenses and exactly what is going towards admin. I also assume this 20% doesn't include the admin that the individual programs incur. Is that correct?
No.
It's just a city's admin, and then the individual programs have their own admin cost. So, yeah, I'd like to have some kind of breakdown or, maybe I'll be convinced at the end of six years that, maybe we need 25% admin.
Mr. Yusefian?
I, I think Mr. Quintero is right to a point. One thing I do disagree with him is that we need to get this answer earlier than later. Maybe he does not remember this, but he's asked the same question several years. I've asked the same question several years, and we've been told we will get back to you later, and by the time we get back to us, it's way later after the money has been allocated already, and it's too late for us to do anything. But one thing that I'd like to know is, even if you took the $40,000 out and some of those charges, leaves you $600,000. How many people does it take? How many hours do you spend on some of these programs? And that's, I mean, I can understand that when we used to have a time that there were a lot of other projects, other capital projects that were 300,000 here, 400,000 here, 500,000 here. You are just basically, with the exception of all the city projects, you have four. Last year, four. One, two, three, four. Four projects outside. Everything else is within the city. Everything else is budgeted by the city. It's the city this, and city that, and city this. So, the city keeps taking all these monies, different account here, different account there, different. So, community block grant, that's why the president of this country keeps vetoing the CDBG every year. I hate to say this. At one point, the public are going to turn around and say, this is a big bureaucracy. We don't want it, because the public doesn't get the money.
Mr. Starburg?
Mr. Mayor, first off, there aren't four projects. There are at least 13 community projects that also get administered.
I talked about the capital.
I'm talking about what the 20% goes for. It's not just the capital. Secondly, I have to say, because the city does a capital project, doesn't mean it's not for the community. The city doesn't do a, a pool because, what, we on staff get to go swim in it? It's about the community. So, to distinguish some things for the community versus the city, I have to take issue with that. This isn't about the city or the city government. This is about meeting needs in neighborhoods. And you all have talked about things like pools for, for a number of years, about a need in those neighborhoods for a pool. And I have to say, if you want to put a program like code enforcement and $400,000 for code enforcement is important, and let the committee essentially decide whether that's more important than something else in the community, it's okay. But I will tell you, I think code enforcement's a high priority. I wouldn't get the community set up to think that they can compete for that $400,000. And then again, if, if indeed they're successful, then you have to tell them no, as Mr. Najarian pointed out. You have to tell them no, after they have their heart set on something, and they file their papers, and they've gone through the whole evaluation process, only to hear that, no, the council's going to tell them no, because code enforcement is important or a pool is important. I just don't think that's fair to those groups. Believe me, if you put all of the capital money up for competition, there will be more applications than if you put up the amount of money that's left over after designation, because Pete, these groups see a pot of money and they're used to competing. They live on grants, and they live on competition. I also want to point out, community development block grant money was not always made available for capital projects for, for nonprofit groups. And when I got here, it was one of the first years that money was made available for nonprofit organizations to compete for, and it was a small amount. Prior to that, the money went into neighborhood development programs, but they were not meeting needs like roof and heating for nonprofits. They have historically been community administered by community development and housing in the city for neighborhood improvement. I'll tell you, going back to the beginning of the program, they funded, they funded economic development programs. CDBG didn't start because nonprofit groups needed assistance. They started as an economic development program.
Mr. Starburg, I think the, most of the discussion was over the 20%. And I think that's where things get lost. Sometimes we go back and discuss other issues. It's the 678,000 dollars. And what I was trying to say is, you have 678,000 dollars. Even if you pay each person 100,000 dollars, that's six individuals. Six individuals to do what? How many individuals do we actually have working on this thing? And that's what I want to know.
Mr. Starburg, let me, let me just interject that. I'm, at this point, I'm merely raising the, the issue that, that I would like to have some information on that, when you can put the information together and explain to us, because on its surface, it creates a question for me, and I'm not ready to, to throw you to.
Mr. Mayor, let's.
For that, but I'm sure there's a good explanation for it, and please, when, when it's possible, at your earliest convenience, please come to us with some explanation. Three of us have expressed at least a curiosity as to why the figure is necessarily tagged at 20%, despite large amounts of pre-designation, and we can maybe get into the details when we, when we understand it a little bit better.
You can give us a report. In the meantime, there's a couple motions.
Yeah, I'll move one and two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Two A, and they have been moving seconded. Discussion, roll call.
Authority members, Raymond?
Yes.
Mincy?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Rosian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Yusefian?
No.
Chairman Weaver?
Aye. I move to adjourn for the city council.
Second.
Council's adjourned?
Move to adjourn for the authority?
Second.
Housing stands adjourned.
Now, wait, one more.
Now, one more. Redevelopment and housing is next. No, there's one more. Redevelopment and housing.
Did I throw it away?
May we have a roll call for redevelopment agency, please?
Agency members, Draymond.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Chairman Yusefian.
Here.
Housing?
Housing authority.
Housing authority.
Authority members, Draymond.
Here.
Mincy.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Frazian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Yusefian.
Here.
Chairman Weaver.
Here.
May I have your report, please?
The agenda for the November 6, 2007 joint public meeting of the Glendale Housing Authority and the Glendale Redevelopment Agency was postponed on Thursday, November 1, 2007, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Okay, what's the next item, please?
Item number one is a public hearing, Director of Development Services and Director of Community Development and Housing regarding update to the five-year, 2005 through 2009 implementation plan for the Central Glendale Redevelopment Project and the San Fernando Road Corridor redevelopment project areas. At 1A is agency resolution approving and adopting the update to the implementation plan. At 1B is authority resolution approving and adopting the update to the implementation plan.
At this time, I open the hearing. Mr. Lanzafim.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairmans, members of the agency and Housing Authority, this is our update plan. You have the plan in front of you. It contains status on some 70 projects. What we presented, or what we prepared for you today is a summary of the background of this report, why it's necessary, what it includes. And we've tried to highlight some of the, or we've tried to present some of the highlights of that report. We're not prepared, or I should say, we're not planning to go through all 70 projects. We do that through our CIP and the budget. We've just recently done that in the last couple of months. We are prepared, though, if you would like to go through all the projects or any one of them, we have images of those projects. But for the initial presentation, I'll introduce Elena Bobolian, who, with Mark Berry, put together this update report.
Anybody wants to have?
No.
Mr. Scott.
One question.
Mr.?
Ms. Bobolian or Mr. Lanzafim, of those in the San Fernando Road Corridor area, is the Flower Street Crossing included as one of the projects? Is that something that's?
It is.
That's one of them. Okay, thank you.
With that, is there any other questions?
No, I just want to say, very well put-together report, very impressive. I mean, it's almost a marketing tool, to tell you the truth.
Exactly.
That you can show to companies and individuals.
Market this thing around.
Very well done.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thanks.
I'd like to move 1A for the agency.
Second.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Prior to adopting that, the resolution for the agency, I would note that there was an errata sheet that was passed out on page 51. And therefore, that resolution for the agency, the third whereas, is being modified as follows. It says, "The agency has reviewed and considered the update to the five-year implementation plan," and then insert "including the errata" on page 51, "and has held a public meeting, public hearing on same." So that's, would be the amendment both to the agency's resolution and as well to the Housing Authority's resolution.
And I'm pretty sure the maker of the motion meant those amendments.
Right, and that's the update on the actual projected deposits.
Correct.
Okay, there's a motion in the second with amendment. Is there a roll call? Yeah, close the public hearing.
Roll call?
Yes.
Agency members, Draymond.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Chairman Yusefian.
Aye.
Is there a motion for the housing?
So moved. Second with the modification.
Thank you. Roll call.
Authority members, Draymond.
Yes.
Mincy.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Frazian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Yusefian.
Aye.
Chairman Weaver.
Aye.
Move to adjourn for the housing.
Wait, wait, Mr. Lanzafim.
Chair, just one thing. It was our intention to create a book that is easy to read and will give some images. This report is posted on our website and we do that for anybody that might need that information. They can go to the development services website, brokers, investors, anybody that needs some kind of update. So it is there and currently there in the same, in color, just as you see it here.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn for housing?
Second.
Housing is adjourned. The motion for redevelopment? So moved.
Second.
We adjourned.